Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Welcome to Andrews the Podcast. This is a special show we got going on this Saturday morning right here. But before we get to that and my guests who I got in studio here with me, I want to remind you guys about tomorrow, I mean, excuse me, about Monday, January fifteenth, MLK March that's going down in Andrews, South Carolina. It will, the march starts at, starts at noon and starts at noon, Martin Luther King Junior Day, the annual march from Andrews, I mean, in Andrews, South Carolina. The theme this year is living the dream. It starts with me, spreading hope, courage and unity. Move this out of my way so I can see. The keynote speaker for, for this Monday's event is going to be none other than Reverend Trevor S. Crop, who also is a branch manager over at First Citizens Bank here in Andrews. Okay, the, the march is going to start at Town Hall, which is located at one oh one North Morgan Avenue in Andrews, South Carolina, and we're going to march south down Morgan to the MLK Junior Monument. Now, there's going to be a very big announcement that takes place on, on Monday, and that announcement is going to involve the fact that the YMCA is going to be coming to Andrews. And we'll get more into that, you know, more, more into that whole situation a little bit more. I mean, a little later in this conversation that I'm about to have here. Did it do, what else do I need to make an announcement about? Okay, again, the YMCA will be making its official announcement about opening up a branch here in Andrews, South Carolina. So I definitely look forward to that whole thing. And, and the YMCA, I know from what I've been, the information that I've got is going to focus on young men from eleven to seventeen. And if you, if you follow what's going on out here in the streets, that's that age group where we need to really, where we really need to make a difference in these young men, men's lives. So, look forward to that. Also, on that day, you guys will get to see, for the first time, you get to see the Troop Two One Nine Three Girl Scouts have returned to Andrews, South Carolina. And it's been almost eleven years or eleven years or better since the Girl Scouts have been in, since we had a troop here in Andrews. And I know today kicks off their official cookie sales, you know, today. So we look forward to that. And everybody that's in there, Mr. Scott, Miss Neesmith and everybody, make sure y'all, make sure you guys share out this, share out, share out this, this, this broadcast. Hit the like button, share it out, because when you hit the like button, what it does, it brings more people to the conversation. All right, and also in studio, behind the cameras here, we got some, some guys, some cementees that Mr. Randall brought with us. And we're going, we're going to set up something, something separate aside from this and, and, and put them on, one second. So, we going to get started here. Again, I need you guys to share this out so that, you know, we can get more people to it and we can all get to know who the candidate running for Williamsburg County District Three seat. All right, and, you know, you heard me say his name, you heard me talk about him a couple of days ago. It's Mr. Randall Neesmith. There is a picture of, of him right there. He's getting his lives straight. So, if you got questions, get in the comment section and, 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 you know, put the questions up there. And then we'll, we'll, we'll move forward, you know, like that. But without further ado, Mr. Neesmith, first of all, thank you, sir, for coming to sit down with us. I, I do appreciate you. Hold on, let me get your mic on there. But I do appreciate you. How you doing this morning?
Man, doing, uh, doing good. First, I want to thank you for having me on. I know I'm having a little, some difficulty or whatever, technical difficulty, but I appreciate you, man, having me.
It, it happens, bro. It happens. I, um, it, it happened. When you brought the young men in here, I was like, you were forgiven. I was like, all right, cool. He got, he got the young brothers in here. That's important that they see us do things like this. And, you know, so I, I do appreciate you for that, man. So first of all, man, let's get this started by you telling us a little bit about yourself. For the, you know, for, for those who don't know you, you know, I mean, give us a little bit about your background. You know, who you are, who, who is Randall Neesmith?
All right, I'm trying to give you the short version.
No, man, we take time here, man. We ain't got nothing else to do right now.
But native, man, native of Williamsburg County, which, you know, we bought Andrews. So pretty much two nine five one oh for the most part, pretty much brought up here, born and raised. Graduated class of two thousand nine, two thousand ten, C Murray High School is where I graduated from high school. Left there, went to South Carolina State, was a double major there. Civil engineering, technology and professional land surveying. And also the, along with professional land surveying, I was the first in the state to hold that degree. Not the first black, but the first altogether. So left there, went to Greensboro, North Carolina. Pretty much we have a family company, Neesmith Construction. Worked there for three years in Greensboro. That's when I pretty much got into, to coaching. We'll, we'll get to that. But anyway, came, um, came home, took a job with a Williamsburg County School District, teaching building trade, so pretty much something I did all my life, which is carpentry, construction, plumbing, electrical masonry, things like that. So, took that job, taught and coached, coached, actually coached in a state championship at Hemingway High School as well. So now what I'm doing is I work for Williamsburg Technical College. But believe it or not, I teach most of my classes inside the federal prison, pretty much right there in Salton. So, and pretty much it's now up to date of, you know, trying my hand, well, another turn at, at the politics.
No doubt. So, and that, that's, 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 that's the question that, that a lot of people, the first question they're going to ask you is why, why are you, why are you running? What, what's, you know, what, what, what brought you here? What made you say, man, I want to put my hat in the ring? And, you know what I mean, because a politician's job is, is not a high paying job. You know, it's, it's, it's more about service than anything. So what, what made you decide to put your hat in the ring?
Um, another good, another good question. Honestly, the first, my first time in anything political was, believe it or not, Senator Sam. He was my basketball coach at the time when I was at C Murray. But I helped him, I think it was my eleventh grade or twelfth grade year with his campaign. So that was my first time ever seeing anything on the political side of just the workings of that. And also, you know, of course, a good man, you know, good role model. So that was the first introduction to it. Then we got in the climate of, you know, again, I'm in college and I'm starting to see just the different, the different things that's happening throughout the world. So it makes, start making you conscious and, and, you know, and self-aware of certain things. So again, in, you know, my fraternity, Alpha Alpha, you know, we talk about services, service to all. And like you said, you know, politics is a, is a service thing. It's something that should come from the heart and really is just all about the people. So when I told you coming home from Greensboro, I just saw the, I saw the need, talking, you know, talking to people and just handling their concerns and just seeing the state of, you know, the county. For one, again, when you go off and you go to these different counties or you're in college and, you know, everybody rep, you know, their area. So in them repping their area, you know, and you start to see where you at on the total poll of, you know, the lower state and things like that. And pretty much seeing where Williamsburg County at and just wanting to be a help to that. Because again, you know, where we at, we're going to move forward and, you know, we only going to get better. But I just didn't necessarily like the light that it was in. So again, talking to the people and pretty much dumb wanting better and knowing we working just as hard as anyone else. So we should be able to, be able to afford to find the things just like anyone else. So, so again, it was really just the people, man, and wanting the service. Then adding that on now to being current, I have a one-year-old son. And of course, what parent doesn't want, you know, the best world for their child? So that's, that's pretty much what, you know, what led me here, you know, just a passion.
That, that's, that's one of the things that me and my, me and my partners be talking about a lot, man, is having that purpose and you, you mentioning your child and that makes you want to be in, and that's, that's just, it, it just, you just tapped into something that I, we was just talking about, which is, which is, is right online, man. Tell us about, a little bit about District Three, which, which, what areas, what area of Williamsburg County? Because Williamsburg County is a large county. What area of Williamsburg County does District Three cover?
Okay, again, you know, for people to know, we actually just did some re, some relining. So, so people that know, you know, when I say these names, they'll, they'll sort of know the area. All right, but again, we bought Andrews. So if you come, you, you know Boyd Town, you know County Line Road right there. So if you come to the four-way intersection of Ebenezer Church and the, the few depot, well, pretty much if you get on County Line right there, everything to the left is still Williamsburg County. So 3D, Petting House, all those things are 3D. So that's that line. Well, you can take that line to what they'll call Piney Forest. There, which is again, to that transition to Blooming, to Bloomingville area, some people would say, would still be District Three. All right, so we come back to Sutton's area. You know, the Sutton's area, that's another borderline. Then we go to Hell of Acre, Lanes, Triyo, those are the, pretty much the bigger names that everyone would know. Salton's, Blakely area. So that's all of, and just how large District Three.
Yeah, I, I, I got a map up here and this map was from twenty twenty-one, so it could, it could have kind of changed a little bit.
Just a little.
But, but it's, I, I, that's the first thing I noticed is one of the larger districts in the, in, in, in Williamsburg County. And, and, and so now, so now we know the areas that, that it covers. Tell us a little bit about the district, about, you know, what you, what you know about the people in the district and, and just kind of give us a little bit about, you know, what you think about, not so much what you think, but what? Tell us about District Three and as far as, you know, the people and the makeup of it.
District Three is just, it's another reflection of just Williamsburg County as a whole. For one, I'll just say, first thing comes to mind, you know, it's hardworking, hardworking people in District Three. I think if you go to different companies or you go to anywhere, whether, you know, whether, you know, we went off to college or whatever, we pretty much, we occupy a space and, and we have show, show signs of, of leadership. So again, I think if you go to 3D, you'll realize there's people from District Three that are leaders and are doing well in their, in their, in their fields. So one would just be leadership, well, hardworking, you know, people who are, in a sense, not looking for hand, handouts. You know, they're willing to put in the work. So that would be one of the, the biggest things I would say about District Three. Loyal, I would say, pretty much, you know, just, they want to know what it is and they want to know what it ain't. And I think, you know, anybody should be, you know, a fan, you know, a fan of that or champion that, you know, no, no wolf tickets, you know, telling me one thing, doing another. You know, so again, and we, you know, just like any other place, want to pride ourselves on integrity.
Absolutely. So, right, I, I mean, what, what are some of the concerns that you're hearing coming out of, from the constituents as you, as you, you know, move along in this process? Because, because, because you, you ran at, in the last, in the last election, well, the last round of elections.
And, and let me thank the people, man. I thank everyone who voted in the last election. Again, no one, no one in a sense can, you don't get the true meaning if, if someone can just vote for theyself or money can just, you know, buy a, you know, buy a seat or whatever. So again, I want to thank everybody for voting, but yeah, I did, I did run, ran the last time around.
And, and, and what are some of the concerns that come, like some of the, the, when people talk to you, what are some of the immediate things they say that, hey, man, can you help us with this in District Three? What are some of the concerns of District Three that, that you want to affect in a positive way?
Another good, another good question. Thank you for asking it. I'll say, let's just say real mentorship. You know, you see the guys I got with me, the young men I got with me. None of these things are, or anything I start to do is just because I woke up and said, hey, I should do this. It's, it, it becomes a need. So the first thing I'll say is just resources, right? We wanted to be able to be afforded the, the ability to have things to say, hey, you know, I need to shoot a podcast or I want to, I would like, you know, somewhere for the youth to go, these things. So again, man, not to get too deep into it, but I'm sure you probably know a DP Cooper Elementary.
Oh, absolutely.
That was closed. So that was one, one big thing that people were, you know, I just keep getting, you know, what they going to do with DP Cooper? What they going to do with DP Cooper? So again, just in talks with, with the piles that be and people about pretty much just trying to get that back into the community hands. And when I say the community hands, not necessarily like we just own this thing in a sense outright, but we want to have access to it. We want to be able to utilize it if, if need be. So again, when you have situations like if, you know, the YMCA want to come in and help out, you know, we have, we have a, an area for that. So I'll say just resources, man. We just want to have the resources. We want to be able to possibly, you know, be able to pay our water bill, you know, right in our backyard, like some other people, some other people do.
I got you. And you, you talked about, what, what, what are some, like, outside of, outside of the politics, what are some of the, I, I know you, you have a nonprofit. Tell us about your nonprofit.
Nonprofit, man, Real Mentorship is non, we pretty much cover Williamsburg County and Georgetown County. And again, it's kind of growing. It was something, you know, me and my brothers always talking about and pretty much did. Just, and again, just saying, like you were saying, you and your fellows was talking, it was something we pretty much did. But it was like, okay, we need to pretty much get more people involved and pretty much, you know, pick this, put it down on paper so, you know, we can sort of, you know, show and tell and get people behind us. And again, so far, it's, it's sort of growing faster than we even thought. I actually had a grandmom from Sampit wanting to sign her, her eleven-year-old grandson.
What, what, what's the name of the nonprofit?
Real Mentorship.
Real Mentorship.
Real Mentorship is the actual name. So anyway, REAL is an acronym. First thing, we believe if any young man can accept responsibility, right? They can accept responsibility. So the, the REAL, the R in REAL is for responsibility. The second is the E, if he can embrace it. So first you accept the responsibility, whatever it is, good or bad, you embrace it, right? It's no running from it, you know, you don't fall and stay down. You get up, you embrace it. So A is, you know, appreciate it, you know, because again, if, if it wouldn't rain yesterday, we wouldn't appreciate the rain. We wouldn't appreciate the sun today.
Absolutely.
So again, so appreciate it. And we believe if you possess those three qualities and embrace these things, those responsibilities, embrace them the right way, you automatically going to have the signs of being a good leader. And that's the end goal. You know, we want to raise, you know, young black boys, young boys, period, just to be good leaders. Leaders of their community, leaders of their household, and first off, leader of them, you know, their self. So if you can, you know, lead yourself, you can be example for, you know, other people. So that's pretty much what real mentorship is in a nutshell.
And, and, and one of, one of my, one of my skills is I gauge, like doing through interviews or whatever. I know what people are passionate about and I can tell you're passionate about that, about that, about the nonprofit, about helping the kids. I could just, I can hear it in your voice and I, and I, and whenever I do ask about it, you light up in a different, you know, different way. So don't ever lose that, bro, like, because again, that is.
And also too, you know, before I get too far ahead of myself, I want to thank the parents. You know, because parents, they have to first realize that, hey, you know, my son can use some, you know, some mentor, whether it's mom, dad or whatever. So awareness, you know, is very important. And again, a lot of these parents reached out and again, was things he was doing just through coaching and all that. So again, I want to thank the parents because without them and without the kids, you know, there, there isn't no real mentorship. So thank you, parents.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's important. So how can a parent that's watching this right now, that wants to, to want to put her son in, 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 in this company? You know what I mean? How can, how can they get in contact with your organization?
We, we have a, a Facebook page, pretty much our COCR community outreach coordinator, Roxanna Collins, runs a Facebook page. You can, you can reach out to her. And again, whether my Facebook or whatever, you know, we definitely approach, but we definitely ain't too big for a DM or whatever. Because actually, one of the kids that, that's here, his mom just straight, you know, she DM'd me or whatever. And it was like, okay, you know, no brainer. But I would say to parents, because we're, we're filling up fast. And again, we don't necessarily want to turn no kid around, but we're intentional. When I say intentional, I don't want my mentors to have, to be overwhelmed by mentees. So again, it's almost like having a classroom of five versus a classroom of twenty-five.
Absolutely.
So again, we want to keep it small and intimate and we don't want to, in a sense, outgrow mentees than we have mentors. So also, you know, men out there.
That was my next question.
Yeah, you know, so we need y'all as well, because again, you see, I got five with me today, so.
And you got to feed them, because they, they look hungry.
Exactly, exactly. You see, I'm sure they all, they all can eat. So again, but we'll have them at MLK banquet tonight as well, too. So just exposure, man, like I said, what, what Senator Sam did for me, you know, was exposure.
There you go.
Once you have that exposure, that light bulb go off and, you know, now they all can say, hey, I seen a podcast, I seen an interview, you know, done live, so.
So what, what, what are, right in line with that, and, and so what are some of your plans for? So, okay, so boom, the people, the, the, the voters of, of Williamsburg County say, hey, we, Randall Neesmith, and, and I'm sure they're going to do that. We, we trust you with this position. What, what are some of the things that you plan to bring to District Three? And I don't expect you to lay it all out, because guys, this won't be the last time that he's on here, all right? He's going to, you know, and I definitely got to get this crew on here after we get them fed today. But what, what are some of the plans that you, that you, that, that people can expect from you?
Okay, it's good and, and, and that's the, the good thing about, you know, me running the last time and just being passionate and consistent, right? We don't really have to change nothing for the most part, structure-wise, of what we've been, what we've done the last time I ran. And one thing I'm always big on, and I tell people and I told them last time, you know, this how we got to sort of look at it, right? When you look at police officer, you said protect and serve, or just elected officials. When you, when you elect me and you vote for me, you pretty much hired me to do a job. And it's my job to do that job well. So again, just advocating. So if it, if it's something, so again, it, it's my job to, to do that job well. So advocating first and foremost. Again, when I'm going around, man, people, voices, don't feel like their voices are heard. They don't feel like no one is, in a sense, speaking for them. So again, first I'm going to just always be an advocate, like I came in doing. And I'm, you know, I'm finished doing, always being an advocate. Not to get too deep into it. I mentioned DP Cooper School, just being able to help facilitate that. And again, we don't want another ran-down school. I know you know about the Bloomingville area. And again, St. Mark Church is where I go to and, you know, right next to St. Mark Elementary. You know, we even helped them and just talking to them and see how they went about getting that school back up to, to pretty much being.
Functional, being functional and I, I'm with you on that.
So I don't want, I don't want, I don't want DP Cooper to have to sit too long and, and again, and with that, you know, I mentioned Neesmith Construction and, and pretty much my background, we have the expertise to, to do, to do those things. You know, what's out of code and all that, you know, and help facilitate that and, and be the experts when it comes to that, that side of things. But again, I think, you know, the elected officials, you know, I think everyone is on board with, you know, with District Three. Pretty much making sure DP Cooper is, is functionable. So that's, that's one thing. The other thing, again, man, like I told you, and you mentioned, not to get too far ahead of things, but you know, hopefully Monday, man, we have an announcement that also is a, a, a good look for District Three.
Absolutely, man. The YMCA coming to the area, it, it, it's, it's right along with, 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 you know, what, what, what we need, man, more than anything. You know what I mean? Outside of politics, these young brothers need, they need direction, you know what I mean? Because there's so much different things that's, that's, that's out there, out there to distract and take them off, you know, down all these different crazy rabbit holes. There's another, have you met Butch Kennedy?
Butch Kennedy?
But he has a program, he has a nonprofit, Palmetto Hope Network. And one of the things he has, one of the programs he has in that is called Boys to Men.
Okay, okay, okay.
Well, if you haven't, you, you definitely, you know.
And I think, I think I do, and I, Boys to Men, we, we sort of run a.
Out of, out of Charleston area.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I think, I believe, I, I believe I do. But again, man, one of the end goals for real mentorship, I wouldn't say end goals, but just another layer. We plan, plan to add to it, man, is, you know, just our juvenile system, man. Trying to keep, again, I told you, I work in a federal prison. So that was another thing that just lit a match under me. It was like, I definitely need to do this. We definitely need to do this and do it fast. Because, you know, in talking to these guys and you realize just how early people are getting off, you know, these kids or these young boys are getting off track. So again, when you have, when you can keep them, I think the percentage rate of once they hit that juvenile system, the percentage of them going back into, into the system.
Crazy high.
Exactly. So again, we want to pretty much be able to beat our net, you know what I'm saying, to keep that from happening. Again, man, I have a, in the nonprofit, we have an excellent, you know, excellent board, man. We have Attorney Dowd Harvin. We have a judge and attorney, Kim Hodge, Kimberly Hodge. Judge Pyatt, you know, Christopher, Christopher Wilson, you know, also, you know, and myself. And again, like I said, Roxana. But again, we have, you know, we, we just have people that's on board. And again, you know, we was intentional about everything we, we did, from the colors we picked to everything, man. So you know, it's a, we, you know, we here to work and we just.
That's what's up, man. Listen. Welcome to Andrews the Podcast is, is a platform that you guys, I love to have, you know, your board on. And so we can kind of walk that now and, and, and give people a, a, a deeper look at what it is and the importance of it, what it is that you're doing. So if, if, what, what do you see as the primary role as the county council, as the seat that you're running from, running for District Three, Williamsburg County, what do you see as the primary role of a county councilman?
For one, you know, you, you speak for the people, you know, of your district. And you, you know, every decision you make, you, you have them in mind. So again, they can feel like they're, and know that their verse, voices are heard. So I think again, you know, when it, when it comes to advocating, of course, you know, you get a hundred calls or whatever. How many calls you may get a day, you still. how many calls you may get a day, you still have to, in a sense, you know, get back to those people and those people know. And that's why integrity is so important, uh, because again, people might not get to talk to you every day or see you every day. But again, like I tell, you know, the young men that we talk to, uh, you know, you can always find a good leader, because they'll always be doing the right thing, whether someone is watching or not, you know, so just, uh, having integrity and again, making the people and letting the people know their voices are heard, um, and they can get behind and know you made the right, uh, decision for the betterment of everybody, um, for the whole body, um, along with District Three, but also for Williamsburg County as a whole, sort of move everybody forward. So I think that's the, you know, the, the main, uh, role of, uh, you know, the county councilman. Um, you know, make educated decisions, um, based off of, you know, what your people want and need.
Alright, and, and, um, when is the official launch date for, um, cause, because you, you guys got to participate in the primaries in June?
And, um, So again, I'm, uh, you know, luckily to have your platform, um, but again, we, we can't even file till the middle of March.
Okay.
Uh, so you know, we, we got a, we got a little bit of, of time, um, and I'm enjoying it though, you know, going to these little pockets, you know, having these intimate meetings and settings with, you know, the powers that be and, you know, just the, the power people in these, these little, uh, in these smaller areas. Um, so again, cause again, you know, just like you said, you, once you get in, you get around somebody, you know what's real and you, and you know what's not. So, um, so again, we got a little, little time, we'll file in March and then we have, uh, June, pretty middle of June will be election and then, you know, uh, so again, that's what we'll be, uh, it's our timeframe.
And, and, uh, one of the things that, that folks, uh, cause campaigns aren't cheap and, and, and it's gonna, um, and at that time, you know what I mean? Um, how do you, how, how, how is, how is your campaign funded? Is it by you and the people? How, how do you talk, talk about campaign funding? Let's talk about the elephant in the room.
Um, yeah, and, and you know, that'll be, you know, that'll be coming, but right now, you know, I ain't asking, uh, you know, I ain't asking or seeking no, you know, no donations.
But he is asking y'all to share this broadcast and hit the like button. That's what he is asking for that. He'll cost that for that, man. I ain't charging for that yet.
And, uh, definitely, uh, share, um, share, hit that like button, um, because again, like I said, D, you know, you got full blown production right here, man. You know, full blown production, but anyway, um, I'm not seeking no funds and, uh, donations right now at the moment. Uh, but again, just like anything, man, you know, grass, grassroots, um, grassroots. Uh, I think the last election, I think a lot of people were impressed. And to be honest, I know a lot of people been surprised when they saw, you know, how, how well we, uh, rolled things out and, and how we really hit the ground running. Um, so again, I think, uh, people support where they put their money to.
Hey, man, I, I, I'll go as far as to say this, I, I've learned in this, in this last two year process, because I really dug down into the, the, the local politics of Georgetown County and, and Andrews, because a lot of times people will talk about things that we don't know about, because we're not there to actually see it or to understand, and the answers are usually right there. But one thing I'll say about those folks across that walk on my neck, like you said, people support what they believe in, not just through in word. So to the, to the, to the, to the, and I'm saying this to the other nonprofits in Williamsburg County, to the churches in Williamsburg County, um, get together in your groups and support this man financially, okay? In order for him to bring this vision and help bring this vision to, to, to reality, okay? Don't just, you know, again, that's, 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 that's the ugly part of it that people don't want to talk about. But hey, nothing, nothing, nothing runs without, without money, okay? So, um, you know, it's gonna be good to, you know, that you get out there on the street and you support them, you know, but
And, and too, man, I, I appreciate it, because a, a lot of times, again, when I was working with Senator Sam, I didn't realize that, you know, hey, someone, you know, donations and, and, and money has to, you know, these signs ain't cheap, uh, you know, whatever, uh, these things aren't cheap, so you, you know, you need that support. So I think, um, you know, I thank everybody and, you know, and just in my, in the conversations, man, I think, uh, you know, the, the support, the support is, is real, you know, some things, again, you can't, you know, you can't fake, um, and you know, like I said, meeting with these community leaders and, and pullers of the community or whatever, you know, I think, um, you know, I think, I think we're gonna be, gonna be alright, you know, but again, we, you know, nothing is too small, nothing is too big, you know, we, we accept all donations.
Again, guys, I'm sitting in here with Mr. Randall Neesmith, he's running, he's gonna be, uh, launching his campaign, you know, as soon as the filing day open, he'll be in there, uh, District Three, Williamsburg County Council Seat, um. And so let me get that up on the screen right here. So, uh, you know, we want to do, we, we, you know, what we can over at Welcome to Andrew's the Podcast to support him. Um, one thing I don't do, I don't endorse candidates that I don't believe in, um, because you can get people in office.
I heard, I heard, uh, well, coming on here, man, I already knows, I, I know.
Well, I, I, well, bro, I know you, I, you know what I mean? And I, I, well, I observed you, you feel what I'm saying, and what you, and, and your coaching and how you interact with the kids, you feel what I'm saying? You can't fake that, you feel what I'm saying?
And I'm gonna tell you, man, I think if you, if you want to see me in my, uh, purest form, uh, coaching and, and mentoring, uh, is it, and I think, uh, pretty much, I done coached, uh, 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 coached and definitely coached against, um, you know, every the, the kids, uh, the kids, you know, the ones that I, I have in here. So again, I think that's, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, people will say, uh, you know, the things you do for free. Um, you know, again, coaching and, you know, which I, you know, I do with the, uh, the county rec, um, here, eleven and twelve, um, basketball, but you know, at Andrews High School, the, you know, the football. But again, man, I'm, uh, coaching is, you know, that's, that's a lifelong passion, you know, lifelong passion.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so, uh, Ms., Ms. Roxanna Williams, you know, Ms. Roxanna Williams Collins? Roxanna said, we rocking, we rocking, well, hold on, let me, let me, you see what I'm saying, I gotta make this official, hold on a second, hold on a second, Ms. Roxanna. This is, you, let me tell you, this, this one you know, Welcome to Andrew's, go ahead, go ahead, brother.
Let me tell you, uh, you know, Roxanna, man, just genuine, you know, just a conversation, just like me and you. So when it, when it's organic like that, you, you know it's real and, and, you know, people, you know, really behind you, you know. So again, she's, uh, from day one, um, you know, that, pretty much you talking about somebody putting their money with them, what their mouth is, and most importantly, their time, um, again, man, she's, uh, when I call, she's answering, you know what I'm saying? And if not, she calling me, so, you know, I, I can't thank her enough.
No doubt. So here you go, Ms. Roxanna. When you, when you hear that bomb drop right there, when you hear that bomb drop, that's when you know it's official over here, Welcome to Andrew's the Podcast, baby. So, um, I ain't gonna hold you much longer, man, uh, but, uh, let me, I got a couple more questions, you know what I mean? That, that, that I was kind of getting from the people, you know? Uh, again, uh, really excited, and I'm, I'm, man, bringing these, these guys in, that's, uh, that's big right there, man. Um, again, I can't wait to get ready to talk to you, your big man right there, he, he's super articulate and I'm already ready, I'm already ready to put him on the, uh, you know what I mean, get him his own show, you know what I mean?
He ready, he ready. He was, he actually said, he, he said he had a little bit of interviewing experience, um. He said they, uh, they do like interviews for Christmas or whatever and, and do it in the family archive, so
That's what's up, man.
That's probably what, what groomed him to be such a good, uh, speaker.
That's what's up, man. Like I said, I got, I got a ton of questions here, um, but I, I, I'll, I'll save them as we move along, because right now, I just wanna, you know, I want people to, to, to get to know, shout out to Brittany, Brittany's in the building, Brittany Neesmith. Uh, y'all make sure y'all share this out, uh, Brittany.
My wife.
Okay, there's it, hey, that's, that's always, that's always a good thing when you got the wife on this, you know what I mean?
Oh, well, it, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be no running if, if she didn't give me, if she didn't give me the okay, I told you, I got one year, so.
Let me drop the bomb on that, again. I feel you on that, man.
That's my boss.
There you go.
That's my boss, my boss.
There you go, there you go, man. Um, let's see what we got here. Um, so you, 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 you're already in the school, so that goes without saying that you, you gonna, you gonna affect the schools in this position. Um, what are some of the, that, that'd get, that'd get, take us down a whole nother rabbit hole.
Yeah, and I think you about to get a, a, a little into one of my other rollouts, um, but, but we're gonna be, we're gonna be affecting schools, uh, in a, in, in a, in a way that's, that's of course a passion of mine, along with the, the mentoring, but, um, all I'll say is, uh, you know, financial literacy is, is, is just one thing I'll say that we'll be, we'll be rolling out here soon.
No doubt. What, what, what is, what is the one thing that, 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 that in, in your mentoring, in your, uh, in the process? What is the one thing that you kind of see where, um, where, when, when these young men come, come to you, you know? Uh, what is that one thing you, you, you see that, listen, we need to really work on in this area and, and, and instill in this in our, in our, in our, in our future?
Man, you, uh, you went to school, you got your masters in journalism, you, 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 you really good at this, um, and, and off top, first thing comes to mind, emotional intelligence.
Oh, oh, man.
Needing, un, I need them to understand that, uh, a first period doesn't make a, a bad day. First period, a bad first period doesn't make a bad day. First person, uh, bad first period doesn't make a bad third period, you get what I'm saying? So moving on, you know, so, hey, I, I fail, get back up and move on to the next play, um, or the next day or the next class or whatever. So again, emotional intelligence, being able to understand, uh, cause again, it's kids who throwing their life away. Cause of cell phone, cause of cell phone out in an instant. So again, uh, emotional intelligence to understand, uh, breathe, take it in, you know, let's accept the responsibility, let's embrace it, you know what I'm saying, let's appreciate it and move on, you get what I'm saying?
Absolutely, man.
You know, your acronym for, you know, real mentorship.
Yep, and, and again, I'mma, I'mma, I'mma reiterate something that he said earlier, um, some of you adult men with all these skills, don't die with knowledge, okay? Do not do that. It, it, it don't serve you. You got all this good knowledge and, and you gotta share it with these young people, man. And check this out, I, I, I had this up on the, up on there, this is something that I've always talked about.
Wow.
Okay, so it's, it looked like, it looked like we planned that, but we did not plan that, that's when you said that, I was like, my man, that's, that's why, again, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a good judge of, you know what I mean, of, of, of the people. And, uh, the one thing I don't want to do is, uh, put somebody in office that, because I've seen, I've seen so much of that, you feel what I'm saying? Of, uh, we got that right here in Georgetown County and I'm not gonna
Vendettas or, or, you know, pitting your friends in and, and things like that, and you know, the, the secret agenda.
And it doesn't serve the people, especially the young people.
Yeah.
You know, and so
They who, they the one who losing the end.
Yep, and, uh, another part of that conversation me and my man was having was that, uh, is, is that, again, them, those guys could getting in here to, to see this, that's, that's more important than anything, because, uh, I'm not gonna be able to do this forever.
Yeah.
You feel what I'm saying? And so somebody got to be able to pick up the mantle, pick up the, the, the baton at that point and carry it on.
Carry it on.
Um, you know, that's, that's a conversation that I was having with the mayor.
And one of my sayings, man, is, uh, you know, if everybody do a little, nobody has to do a lot. Um, and I believe in that, you know, wholeheartedly, um, you know, so again, if we all just do a little, you know what I'm saying? And, and, and this is something I actually learned from one of my students, um, you know, hate, you know, an inmate pretty much. Uh, he, one of his favorite sayings is, um, big things are just small things put together.
That's it.
So, you know, when you, when you grasp that concept, you know, just start, you know, just start.
Yep.
And again, it's organic, so, you know, just like you said, you got emotional intelligence and that's something you preaching and it's just something I said. So again, you know, just start, you know, just start somewhere.
Uh, um, so let me, let me explain this, uh, this comment right here, guys. Uh, shout out to Ms. Veronica McCray, as somebody you definitely want on your team, uh, she is a, uh, she's three and O in this politics thing, I'm gonna tell you that now.
I, I think I, I, I know Ms. McCray too.
No doubt. She, uh, but she says here, she says, Welcome to Andrew's the Podcast does not work for Williamsburg County nor Randall Neesmith. That's one of my taglines, because people think I work for Andrew's, the Tyler Andrews don't pay me a dime, they ain't bought none of the light, none of the camera. And, 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 and I, and I, you know, I say that because I'm loyal to the people, you know what I mean? And so that's what I want, you know, I don't want to be like, uh, these news organizations here, some of these online news organizations who, they got it, they got it, they got to say what, 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 what their bosses is paying, you know what I mean? How they paying them, and so, in order for me to help and, and, and deliver a great product.
Man, me coming on here was just, you know, trying to show and prove my, my transparency.
Absolutely, bro, that's, that's, and that's, that's the, that's the, that's the point of this, is like, come on, man, let's talk to these people, cause, cause
Trust me, I wouldn't be up here, you know, screaming integrity if, you know, if I, if I felt that I didn't, you know, I didn't possess it. Again, I'm, uh, definitely not saying I'm perfect, but again, I'm always conscious of trying to do the right thing. Um, you know, so again, it's, uh, integrity, integrity, man, you can't, can't preach it enough, um, you know, so again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, that's, I want, I feel like this is, you know, it's a safe place, but it's also, you know, what truth is told, so.
No doubt, man. We trying to get like Shae Shae, Club Shae Shae.
Exactly, exactly.
God damn, I'm gonna get broke the internet, man.
Broke it, man, broke it. Very intelligent, uh, fellow though, man.
No doubt, man, and, and, uh, uh, like, this, this is your format, man, um, you know what I mean? This is your format, I'm be, you know, we, we were shooting something the other night and you, 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 you didn't relax like, like you are now, you feel what I'm saying? So I think that's the best, you know what I mean, if I'm, that's my, that's my opinion, that's my assessment, is that to get you, you know, in, in, on this thing right here, man, so you could, you know.
Well, the, the thing is, and I, I think is just, you know, like you saying, you know, a comfort level, because again, man, I'm, you know, I never saw myself as a politician and I, I technically still don't.
Oh, you are. I, I had, I had to, uh, let the mayor know, he, 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 he came with that same, you know what I mean? But, but, and, and it's because
But it found me, just like ministry, you know, like ministry does.
There you go.
Most people are like, oh, I'm gonna be a preacher, you know, it, you know, God, you know, finds you, search you out or whatever, and, and, you know, and it just happens. So same, you know, same here, uh, so sometime I even wonder like, like, politics, like, you know, but again, it's, um, so again, in this, you know, we just having a conversation about the things I'm passionate about, so it's easy.
Alright, um, so, hey Dennis, listen, you, you, were you commenting that? Dennis commented, he said, uh, you, 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 um, you're commenting in the private chat, you gotta go on your page and comment. And what, uh, Dennis is saying is financial literacy, emo- emotional, Dennis Burgess, by the way, emotional intelligence and integrity, that's my power triangle, absolutely, I definitely agree with that, man, um, and again
Again, man, with that integrity, it's, it's not just a surface level thing with me. Again, man, I work in, I'm a contractor for the federal prison, trust me, no one is just walking up in there, you know, and those people wanted to know everything about me. They wanted to know my neighbors, my, my neighbor's phone number, um, and one of them, I was like, um, I don't, I don't know a phone, they was like, you don't talk to your neighbors? I'm like, I don't, you know, so they want to know, know everything, credit score, all that, man, you, you know.
So, what, what, and, and that, that, that brings up a good question for me, uh, makes me think about, uh, because w- working in that environment and, and you bringing this to these guys, a lot of these guys probably come to you real skeptical, because a lot of them know it all, that's why they in prison. You know, um, how do you, how do you, what, what is that, what, what is, what is that experience been for you, um, working there?
Um, and you know, and not to necessarily say too much, but I'll get a little into it. Um, and you, you mentioned the know it all thing, but a lot of them, it's, it's a, just like, you know, the people I'm seeking their support, um, and wanting them to trust me, right? Uh, that was on them, that same thing with them, uh, you know, a wise lady once told me, um, and you probably know, uh, you know, Ms. Means, Ms. Jackie Means' mom, uh, she told me, uh, when I first started teaching, she said, uh, Randall, uh, the kids don't, they ain't gonna want to know what you know until they know how much you care. Um, so that's something that always stuck with me and I even took it into prison. So, you know, with these guys, you know, they used to dealing with the correctional office and the wards and all these things on the day to day. So again, it's a, there's a, there's a barrier there. Well, with me just being a contractor and, you know, and trying to teach and educate, you know, um, in my way, that trust had to be, you know, had to be built. Um, so just in, uh, that, building that relationship and, and again, man, these guys are, you know, some of them are, was in, uh, grad school, you know, um, very educated, you know, you, you all walks of life, you know, all walks of life. So again, I think just like with anything, when you think you're going to teach something, you will end up learning something as well. If you're, if you're not too naive or just, uh, close sighted not to see it, to see it. So again, that was, um, you know, that's something, something big, you know, within the, within the prison, man.
No doubt, that's, uh, again, because that's, that's, in, in what areas, what, what do you teach in, in?
Uh, building, building trades, and it's also, you know, element to what we'll be adding to, uh, the real mentorship too, man, building trades. If you can, if anyone who know, uh, you know, what electrician alley rate is and, and how well electricians can do, plumbers or carpenters, Plumbers or carpenters, uh, and then guess what, it comes with no, uh, and shout out, you know, Williamsburg Tech, man, again. I'm blessed to be able to do the things I'm passionate about, and again, working at a community college who service their community. In the way that Williamsburg Tech do is, um, you know, it's phenomenal, uh, but again, I teach building trade. So, uh, everything from brick masonry to, uh, plumbing, um, electrical, just, you know, carpentry, um, you know, in general. Again, you know, my father, uh, father and uncles, you know, started a construction company back in nineteen eighty-one. And again, it all started from community service, what really kicked them off was Hurricane Hugo. You know, their community needed them and they, you know, they answered the call, so you know, it's, it's, it's almost, you know, it, it's coming full circle. You know what I'm saying? I come from, you know, two parents that are community driven and family oriented, so.
No doubt, salute your parents, shout out to you, shout out to your parents right now, man.
Appreciate it, man, um, my mom, a lady who led me to Christ, man, which is, you know, the first biggest decision I made in my life. Was being a follower of Christ, man, and giving my life to God, Lilian Neesmith, Apostle Lilian Neesmith. Uh, again, owns a church right up, right up the road, uh, non-denominational deliverance ministry, um, and, and my. I'll have to say, man, my best friend, man, uh, you know, Vrenely Neesmith, man, my pops, my OG, again, uh. He taught me how to be, you know, a father, an uncle, you know what I'm saying, a brother, uh, and just, uh, you know, a leader, a leader of men. Um, and he's that through and through, um, I think, uh, and not to be on that, you know, too long, but I don't think there's. Too many people that's doing construction, um, that didn't come through, uh, his umbrella at some point. Um, but again, it's, uh, so, you know, just thanking them for, you know, raising, raising me right, man.
Yeah, and, and I think, man, that's one of the biggest things, man, like, uh, what you're saying right there, because I'm, I'm a firm believer. If, if we teach these young guys skills to make money. We don't gotta worry about, worry about them going out to, to pick up illegal trades to try to make money, cause. You know what I mean, when you can, when you can, when you, it gives you a s- a sense of confidence to win, um. You know, you don't have to take so much, when you got, when you got skills, there's something that somebody can't take away from you, you know what I mean? You, you, you could, you can write your own, on your own destiny, you know what I mean, pretty much, and so.
And you don't have to collect the student loans to be whatever version of success, you know, people, uh, people say, man, like, again. Looking at my, uh, the brick masons or the electricians or the plumbers that, you know, when I was a young boy, you know. And seeing how well off they are in life now and just how well they did for they self and, you know, this is something you can, like I was telling the guys on the way here. You do welding, man, you can do that right out of high school.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Again, uh, it's, uh, you know, those things are, are a dying art, but I think it's intentional, um. And important that we, we get back, um, to those things.
Is, is, is that one of the focuses of your nonprofit?
Yeah, yeah, um, again, that, that goes without, without saying, man, when you come, when you talk about, you know, construction and just these kids being hands on, period. Um, and they don't even know, you know, we got a, a oil change, uh, to do when we leave here. So them working with their hands, again, cause one day they're gonna own a car, they're gonna own a house, uh, and you can, you know, if you know how to fix your toilet. That's three hundred dollars you can save, so again, uh, whether you're a lawyer, doctor, whatever, hands on skills are always.
Man, listen, and, and as, as young men, if we don't have something to do, we become destructive.
Yeah, 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 I mean, you know, idle time, man, and again, that's why we push sports as well. And all of them pretty much active in, in sports, so, and, um, you know, that's also always a help, always a help.
No doubt, man, so listen, um, Randall, I, 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 again, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna overdo it this one. Because, uh, again, I definitely want you back, we gotta do this again, and, um, and, and then, you know, we can sit and, and, and. Head down some different rabbit holes. Uh, cause from this right now, I'm gonna tell you right now, I got a better, a, a better feel of you as a candidate, you feel what I'm saying?
And let me say this before we wrap up, man, um, again, I think, you know, I thank everyone who voted last time, uh. But I'm gonna be seeking, you know, I'll be seeking y'all's support again, uh, this coming, this coming June and just throughout, um, with just. Telling, you know, uh, spreading the word, um, donations and all that, uh, but again, I'm coming to you with the same passion. Uh, drive hard work and dedication as before, and most importantly, integrity, um, integrity. To do the right thing, uh, and trust, you know, I've talked to community leaders and even, uh, leaders throughout our county. Of just the future, um, and where District Three is headed and their concerns, um. And I'm sure, you know, with my integrity and hard work and your support, uh, brighter days for District Three are upon us. And Williamsburg County as a whole, so I appreciate you, uh, and again, that's, that's, if you take nothing else, you know, know that. I'm seeking your support, you know, my integrity and hard work with your support, brighter days are upon us.
Now, you heard it right there, and let me drop a bomb for the man for that right there, you know how that go? That's right, man, welcome to Andrews the Podcast, again, y'all make sure, okay, right now, make sure how you can help with this campaign is sharing this out. Make sure you hit that share button, share it to your different groups, okay? And, um, and, you know, because this is about the folks in District Three in Wi- Williamsburg County, you got somebody here who's, uh, who has an ear. Okay, that's gonna listen to the people and be, uh, be responsive to, to the people, so, um.
And I'll say, you know, please, if, if you support, you know, Randall Neesmith and Neesmith campaign, please like and share. Because everyone needs to, you know, to be able to hear what I have to say and, and, and see me on a platform where, you know, again, he's, he's asking questions live. So again, it's no, you know, it's no ducking, uh, you know, what the people want to know, so please like and share, please share, share, share.
There you go, there you go, um, so, listen, we bout to get out of here soon, let me remind you guys on, uh, Monday. January fifteenth, the Martin Luther King Program, that's gonna be, uh, Martin Luther King Program that takes place annually in Andrews, South Carolina. It's gonna start at noon, uh, from Town Hall, we're gonna start the march at Town Hall at noon, uh, Martin Luther King Annual March. And this year's theme is living the dream, it starts with me speaking hope, courage and unity. Okay, um, and again, the address for Town Hall is one oh one North Morgan Avenue. And we're gonna march from there, a couple blocks down, if you can't take due to march, just meet us at the monument. And, uh, as a, as a reminder, please bring your lawn chairs and bring you a, a nice coat and some hand warmers, because it's gonna, temperature's gonna be down a little bit. Uh, the keynote speaker for that event is gonna be the Reverend, uh, Trevor S. Crop. And there's gonna be a special announcement, you know what I mean, that's gonna affect, uh, a lot of the youth right here in, uh, in this area, go ahead, brother.
Also, man, I wanna thank, uh, Brother Trevor, uh, Crop, he's also a big supporter of real mentorship. And I spoke about the, uh, financial literacy, um, part of it, so of course, you know, you definitely gotta have.
You know what I mean? And, and that's the thing, man, is we got the components, uh, in, right here in place, we just need to activate. You feel what I'm saying? We, how they say in the streets, fellas, we need to get active. You know what I mean, we just need to get active, get out and, uh, and do the thing, again, big announcement, the YMCA is gonna be, uh, located right here in Andrews. Actually, um, in this building where we at right now, be honest, it's gonna be the office of it, so, you know, we'll be podcast, we'll be broadcasting from, from, from some other places. Company future, but, uh.
We got some, some things in the works.
No doubt, no doubt, so, uh, again, y'all make sure y'all be there and the troop two one nine three is, uh, this is their first. Okay, this is their first, uh, they, they first parade, basically, uh, the Girl Scout Troops that's gonna be back in Andrews. So it's about, it's about the youth, twenty twenty four, you know, we always have these big mantras about, you know, what we gonna do this year, this year, well. It's about these kids and, 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 and twenty twenty four around here, okay, about the young people and, and, uh, and affecting them in a positive, a positive way. Again, brother, thank you, um, um, I give you, you know, go ahead and, and, you know, some parting words, uh, for the folks real fast.
Uh, pretty much, you know, what I.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, I turned off the wrong thing, go ahead.
Uh, again, just wanna thank everyone, uh, for tuning in, please like and, uh, share, uh, you'll be seeing and hearing, uh, more, uh, more from me. As we get, uh, closer to, to that date, um, but again, man, just thank you for your platform. And I'm seeking everybody's support to, uh, to rock with Randall. Uh, you'll be seeing the Neesmith campaign and myself in a town, in an area near you, thanks.
And that's it, man, so we gonna be signing off here again, I appreciate you guys.